Okay, good morning. I'm gonna call to order this work session on Tuesday, September 6, 2022. With that, Mr. Drew, roll call, please.
Mrs. Eubank.
Here.
Dr. Rufford.
Here.
Mr. Pullman.
Here.
Mr. Bennington.
Here.
Ms. Larimer.
And I know that she is on her way. So if we'd all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think I will dispense with the safety briefing, if that's okay. Next, we have, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the proposed agenda.
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Pullman. Dr. Rufford, and roll call, please.
You guys are too fast. Mr. Pullman.
Yes.
Dr. Rufford.
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank.
Yes.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes.
Ms. Larimer, yes.
Morning, Sue.
Good morning, so sorry.
Mr. Hustler, superintendent's report.
Yes, good morning. So we wanted to spend a little bit of time working through something that we'd like to propose at the...
Excuse my company.
Sorry.
Please.
Sorry. Good morning. So what we'd like to do is propose, at the next board meeting, a resolution for the board to consider regarding DORA. As you know, DORA is something that is programmed, that the city of Perrysburg has put in place for two areas. One is in Levis Commons and the other is here in downtown. And so with that last expansion of DORA in downtown, the property that the Commodore sits on, the Commodore Square where music in the park and other events take place, is included in that. So I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about what DORA is and what it isn't, and just answer questions or if there are questions that I can't answer, get those prepared to be answered. And at the next board meeting, ask the board to consider a resolution that would allow, you know, the property to be part of the DORA umbrella. So we'll just kind of go through just some general information. So one of the things that we wanted to talk about is this area of, you know, what people talk about is DORA. So DORA stands for Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area. So, and what that enables is for participating businesses in this area to restaurants or places that serve alcohol, to serve alcohol in specially designated cups. And when you have alcohol in those specially designated cups, you're allowed to leave that establishment and travel anywhere with those cups in the DORA area. So that is, you know, basically what it permits. What it doesn't permit is people who have, you know, their own alcohol, like a cooler, and bring that into a certain area of that, you know, of that region, of that area. It doesn't allow individuals who don't have liquor license or haven't been approved to serve alcohol to then to begin to serve alcohol. So what it does is for those areas that are participating in this, they sell the cups. People that have the cups can then take them outside. There are restrictions as to how many cups at a time a person can purchase, and then what buildings are there that you can enter that are designated. So that's what's happening. It is something that local businesses really appreciate. It is something that today folks utilize to come down, to be able to move from one location to the next. And it is something that businesses, you know, see this as a plus in attracting folks to come down to downtown Perrysburg. So the property here at Commodore Square is a piece of property that is very much part of that downtown experience, whether it be music in the park or other events that are hosted on the property. And as it stands now, I do have a map here. You can see what the current area is, you know, for downtown. So it goes from Front Street all the way to Fifth Street to Elm Street. It's that whole block, as you can see here. And this corner here, in the bottom right, is, of course, the Commodore property. So that is the area that is included. You can see that there are nine places of establishment that offered DORA, where you can purchase alcohol, and again, move from place to place. And there's a list of those that are on the screen. The closest one to us is Fifth Street, which is across the street. So if you were at Stella's, for example, on Front Street in Louisiana, and you bought two drinks and you wanted to come down and attend an event, you would have to carry it all the way from Front Street to Fifth Street, you know, almost four blocks across the railroad tracks. So I know there's concerns about people, you know, bringing lots of alcohol onto the property, you know, through a DORA cup. So one, you're limited as to how many you can carry. Most people only have two hands. There's limits as to how many you can purchase per person. And then the distance from the closest area, which of course is Fifth Street, which is just across the street. So it is something that, you know, being able to participate in it would allow that those events, for those individuals that would want to carry a DORA cup onto those events, they'd be permitted to do so. It would not allow individuals to bring a small cooler of their own alcohol onto property, especially the school property. That's not permitted. And so we would make sure that, as we are now, that when those incidents happen, that, you know, we report those and we address them with the proper authorities. And of course, it doesn't mean that the district here would begin to serve alcohol here. It doesn't work that way. So this is just taking this map and saying that events that are taking place on Commodore Square would be able to have the ability for individuals who purchase a DORA cup to be able to come onto the grounds for that purpose. In speaking with local businesses, you know, they certainly would appreciate that extension. It's something that this area brings in a lot of traffic for their businesses, that I know they're very grateful for the district and the board for allowing those events to take place. And I think this would be an extension of that downtown feel for what we would be, you know, able to provide the local businesses. I have been in touch with the city, and so one of the questions that we posed to them based on feedback, and I appreciate those members that offered feedback, is we can ask the city to designate just the Commodore Square grounds to be the DORA area. So behind this building, along Elm Street, we could ask to have that excluded, so it's just clearly that area in the front off of Louisiana and third, just that portion of it, and not the other portions, the parking lot or behind the Commodore Building. So those are the, you know, so that's it. The hours are from Monday through Sunday, noon to 10:00 p.m. So alcohol must be consumed by 11:00, so you can't have people out at 2:00 a.m., you know, walking, you know, downtown, walking onto the district's property. As I mentioned, there is another area over at Levis Commons. This is from the city's website, which is very helpful. DORA is defined as a public area where alcohol beverages are, can be purchased in an approved cup from permitted participating restaurant establishments and enjoyed within the district. It is created to add the vibrancy of downtown Perrysburg, encourage the community and visitors to stroll the area and shop at local businesses. The resolution that the district would have to offer, our legal counsel did do a review of the Ohio Revised Code to see if there are any restrictions that would be prohibiting us from this. I know that there's, right now, in the Ohio Revised Code, there is no laws preventing alcohol from coming onto school grounds. And there is nothing that speaks to school districts and DORA, you know, school district property and DORA, because it is a newer area. This would not be the only public entity in the DORA boundaries. Way Library is another public entity, which also allows DORA to be, you know, on their grounds and in their area. So we wouldn't even be the first public entity to be allowing, you know, permitting that. And then I did share earlier the, what the resolution would say. And it establishes policies, administrative guidelines to limit the consumption of alcoholic beverages and DORA cups. It defines what that is with the hours and operations. It talks about the limited purpose and, you know, the board would be permitted to do that. So this is something that I just wanted to share with the board, offer an opportunity to have a discussion. And I'd like to bring this to next month, or later this month's meeting for the board to allow this to take place. So with that, I'll just turn it over for discussions. Mr. Bennington.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hustler. So again, not planning to vote on it today, but are there any questions for Mr. Hustler to help as we think about this over the next couple of weeks?
Can I ask, the events that are out there currently is a car show and then Thursday Night Market. So other than that, there are no other events hosted at this time by this...
There are other events. Those are the most known reoccurring events. So sometimes the, you know, Perrysburg, I'm just trying to think of some other events that have been out there. We've had with Harrison Rally Day, we've had other events that they've requested use of the property for that, so that's an extension. So Harrison Rally Day is one of those events. There's been other things that have been requested, so.
So let's say there's an event and DORA is approved. Who's in charge of security if someone violates that? Not the school district, correct?
No. So because the district is not having an event which is serving alcohol, providing alcohol, DORA is something that would fall under the city's purview for monitoring, to making sure what takes place there. Just like any time there's an event there now, you know, the district's not required to provide security for that event. So we talked to our insurance carrier about the need for additional insurance if we were to do this. They indicated that that would not be necessary, because again, you know, if we were serving alcohol, that would be one thing. If we were hosting the event where we were bringing alcohol into it, that would be another. But taking a cup from Fifth Street, walking across the street onto our property, doesn't require any additional insurance on behalf of the district. So any events that would happen, Mr. Pullman, would be subject to the police monitoring going around, making sure that that's being enforced. And that happens now, so.
Okay. I have one more question, if you don't mind. So if there was not an event out there, it would be legal if we passed this resolution for someone on DORA day, DORA night, whatever DORA is, to come out, group of five or six, as long as they have a DORA cup, they could just sit out and drink and have a little small discussion?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
You can walk anywhere with that, yeah.
Tom, what, in the resolution, since we, somebody brought up that it could only be on the green, not on the parking lot or behind us, is that mentioned in the resolution?
It hasn't been. So we, you know, based on feedback, I'll begin to work with legal counsel to shape this resolution. So, you know, in speaking with the mayor about kind of carving out the Commodore property, they were very open to that. There are some things that they have to do to make that possible, and he said that he was willing to do that if the board wanted to. So we would then adjust this pending either, you know, this is the area that we designate pending, you know, the process being completed by the city. And we would spell it out, so, you know.
I think that's about the only way that I would even consider it, is the difference between this and when we refused an alumni group to have alcohol at the Huskins Center because this, we are not serving it or we are not sponsoring a group that is serving it. This is, is that the difference?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm struggling with this one, because I think the optics are bad. It's, and it's, it kind of can, my opinion here conflicts with the library. If I were the, if I were on the library board, I would probably say no as well, because kids are there. Adults don't need to be in an area where the kids are at, and the library is open during those times. We have, during that DORA time, there are students in this building, which is why I think the suggestion of carving the building and the parking lot is a good one. But the restrooms, the porta pots are on our parking lot, so it would make sense that somebody would, to get to those, be having a cup in their hand and then be in violation if we were to carve that out. So maybe that's an issue, but I don't know. I'm just, I'm just struggling with the idea of alcohol, of us permitting alcohol on school district property at any point given time. It just, to me, it's a conflicting message when we're trying to tell students not to be doing this yet. And I could see, I understand that it's a benefit to businesses downtown. It has not been a benefit to our business uptown, but it's certainly a benefit I can see to the alcohol-serving businesses.
I think you're getting confused with, like, underage drinking. It's people that are 21 and over.
Well, I understand that. I just think that allowing the potential for misbehaving adults onto school property, because some of the residents that live uptown have some real horror stories about this DORA stuff. And I just don't like the idea of that being on school property.
I talked to some people in city council about DORA and what their experience has been so far and what they've heard since it's been implemented. And it's been a success. So I feel continuing it on and including the Commodore up to Fifth Street is a wonderful idea. I don't see the need to carve out the Commodore property and the parking lot. I think that confuses it. And then again, like Ray mentioned, there's really no one, like, monitoring it, you know. So I don't feel the need for that, to confuse people. Just take it all the way to Elm and Fifth Street, what the proposal is from the city council or DORA.
I certainly see this as a hand-in-hand, working-with-the-city type opportunity. I just, I don't know. Not, not my favorite idea.
I think for, to your point, Ms. Larimer, I think we can make sure that people understand that this would not extend into our school buildings or the Commodore Building. So this would be something that would be just, you know, on the property surrounding the building, however the board would designate that. So to your point, this would not be something that people could come in, you know, for a meeting with a DORA cup, something as that may be, sometimes, that we wouldn't, we wouldn't permit that. So we would make a clear distinction, you know, because I think your point is, is well-taken, that, you know, we try to balance that. This isn't the high school or a school building, so I think we wouldn't even be having the conversation. You're correct, students do enter here for different periods of the day from meetings and other events. On any given night at Fifth Street, you'll see families, you know, eating with kids, you know, in that restaurant setting. And so in some ways, this is kind of an extension of that restaurant, you know. So that's just another way to look at it.
Yeah.
But certainly respect the, we work very hard to make sure that schools are, you know, not sending out any messages. So I, you know, part of the reason we're having this discussion is because of the sensitivity to what you raised and others, so.
And to me, that's exactly, maybe that's what's bothering me about it, is the mixed message. That we're telling kids, you know, don't do alcohol, don't drink alcohol, underage or whatever, it's, you know, and then we're permitting it on the property. I mean, that's seven days a week, noon to 10:00.
We're not, we're not permitting underage drinking on the property, though. That's where I think you're getting confused, maybe.
I'm not confused. I know what underage drinking is, but I'm just think that it's a, I don't know, I just see it as a mixed message. Is school property, I guess I'm just holding the school property up at a higher level.
So I do have two questions, Mr. Hustler. If you can just look into them for me.
Yes.
One of mine was answered when somebody asked about the insurance carrier, so thank you. Do we have any option to opt out in the future if there are issues that occur that we aren't comfortable with?
That's a good question.
And do we have any data from the city and the police department regarding any uptick in issues because of DORA that we could review versus, you know, you know, just qualitative data? If we could get some quantitative...
I can offer two things. We've had two things stolen at Body &amp; Soul. As soon as DORA started, we had two things stolen that have been sitting out there for months, years, and two things were stolen.
I don't know if we necessarily can, you know, accuse DORA for that. As you know, in the uptick and just in people being...
Well, it's an uptick.
Yeah.
Disobedient and not following laws and regulations just for everything across all areas recently. So, you know, going back to what you're saying, Sue, you know, I can see your concern, but, you know, I know in our house, it was always, you know, there are adult things that you can do as an adult, and you're, you know, you're 21. People go to fairs, people go to concerts, people go out to eat, people go, you know, all around, and there's alcohol. So we're assuming people are going to drink responsibly, you know. And don't think for a minute that people aren't, if they need alcohol, that they already have it with them in a cup that isn't a DORA cup. So, I mean, that's a whole different issue that we obviously are not going to try to control. But, you know, I can see the bonus and I can also see, you know, the cons to this. But I would like to see if there's any option for us to opt out later if there does become a huge issue.
And I think, you know, just following up and being sensitive to Ms. Larimer's position, and those are, those are good things, and I will follow up on those. But I think, I think families understand a situation where the city has extended these boundaries and are permitting alcohol, you know, to be carried onto the property with the approved cups. You know, we have bowling, where our high school students go compete, you know, in bowl, and we have golf season that's going on right now. Hockey, most of our events are, you know, split between, you know, Bowling Green or Tam O Shaner. All of those venues, for example, do serve alcohol. And so there are school events where kids are competing. So I think people understand that there is, you know, situations where we are not condoning it, but the nature of the business, the nature of the, in this case, the property and being in that border and being part of a bigger business community, just like those other venues that I mentioned. I think people understand that and know that the schools are very committed to what we do. And at the same time, understand that, you know, we, the schools are part of a larger community where alcohol is permitted at different events, and then we bump into those situations. So, you know, so that is something that, you know, we keep in mind and try to make sure that our message is always consistent, which, you know, is important for students to hear, so.
I also talked to one city council member, I believe, I also, not believe, I watched one safety committee meeting online a few months back when they were talking about the expansion of the DORA program. And one of the impressions I got, and I think it's a good follow-up question from Dr. Rufford, is about the uptick and issues that may have had. The impression I got from that conversation and from watching that safety committee meeting is that it has been a success, that they haven't seen necessarily a large increase or, you know, probably the most concerning thing, I think, I think that's out there is the confusion around where does DORA stop and start in the enforcement of, right now, keeping cups and other types of alcohol off of this ground. So it feels like it's a little bit of, you know, to help, we need to clear up this confusion. Why we're having this conversation, why we're thinking about it. And if, one of my, one of the places my mind goes to is that if we are not, if this, if we don't allow it, then there's some additional enforcement that would need to occur. And I'm not sure I equally like the optics of that. So any other questions or comments for...
Just a couple of, Sue, I understand where you're coming from. I felt the same way, having talked about DORA for a longest time and wondering why. Why are we doing it? Okay, I get it now. Don't necessarily always agree with that. But the other thing is too, Mr. Hustler, are they currently at the car show, smoking, vaping and chewing tobacco? Probably so. Okay. I mean, who knows, right? Who knows, right? That's my point. Who knows? But, so why in, why in the resolution will we have to put that in there?
Yeah, that is something that I provided feedback after I saw the resolution draft, that it talks about tobacco. And I said that is not something that we would want on the property. So, you know, that was feedback that I received previously. So bringing that to the board later this month, we would strike that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, again, we're not enforcing things. Cities haven't, I'm sure, are not going to be here with officers enforcing things. So, yeah, why put things into the resolution that would make us force something that we don't know we can control it typically? But I, again, Mrs. Larimer, I understand where you're coming from with that and having a chance to think through it. I guess that cutoff point with 21 and adults, acting like adults, illegally doing what adults can do. And Mr. Hustler's example with hockey games and bowling, it's certainly, we know that there's an age limit that's legal and there's an age limit that's illegal.
Well, the difference I see in that is that that's not school property.
True.
It's not our school property.
Yeah.
If we could leave that area, I'd also be in favor of just leaving that area. That's DORA, this isn't. So if you're over here in the sidewalk or over here, and I just think you have to have some boundaries too in school. But I don't believe they would be walking over this way anyway. There's no popcorn being popped over that way or any restaurants over behind us here, but.
I suppose if you're just walking, like, and you had your drink and you're holding your cup and you're getting in your car, is what I was thinking. I mean, I don't think people are going to be, you know, hanging out in the bushes drinking over here. But I see it as if you came up and you're crossing over by the library, you know what I mean? And then you're walking through the parking lot, maybe you park there and, you know, you have your DORA cup with you. That's where the, well, we're gonna do this part and not this part gets a little confusing and gray. So in my opinion, again, you just take it to Elm and Fifth and...
Okay. Well, any additional feedback from Mr. Hustler over the next couple of weeks? I'm sure he'll appreciate. Any other questions that come up, then we will put it on the agenda for the regular board meeting in September. Thank you, Mr. Hustler. Thank you for the discussion, board. Next, I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Ms. Larimer.
Second.
Ms. Eubank, any discussion? And roll call, please.
Ms. Larimer.
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank.
Yes.
Dr. Rufford.
Yes.
Mr. Pullman.
Yes.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes. Okay. Consent agenda passes. The next item on the agenda is... The next item on the agenda is going to look for a motion for an executive session for the purpose of discussing specialized details of security arrangements.
So moved.
Dr. Rufford?
Second.
Ms. Laramore and roll call, please.
Dr. Rufford?
Yes.
Ms. Laramore?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes, we are now in executive session.
Not anticipating any?
We do not anticipate any action after the, after the session. Thank you.